I got it.
Oh, yeah, we had great again. Yeah. Actually, we're calling in a spirit maybe right now. And we're going to start working on the five line with you. And we've got a ton of help from the lady that runs Road and Community Center. Awesome. Her name is Cheryl Boots.
Oh, yeah, she's on the back.
She's been on. Yeah.
Thanks for stopping by.
Yes.
Oh, that's why we thought all this. You're ready when you're ready.
Okay, let's call this Talent City Council regular meeting of March nineteenth to order. Roll call, please.
Councilor Coley.
Here.
Councilor Penemaro.
Here.
Councilor Medina.
Here.
Council of Prestizo.
Here.
Council of Byers.
Here.
Council of Para Miller.
Here.
And the mayor, Harris Flub.
Here.
Mayor, you have a form.
Thank you, Hector. Uh, next item on the agenda is additions or corrections to the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to item number three, which is recognitions, proclamations, and community announcements. Any community announcements, Alex?
Sorry, uh, as far as the cor- corrections to the agenda, just noting that we, I think we're going to strike the separate written communications.
Oh, yeah.
For the new council rules.
So we're, uh, striking item number thirteen from the agenda because it's no longer an order of, in order of business according to our council rules. Thank you, Alex.
Certainly.
Uh, any community announcements?
Yes, yes, thank you, mayor, uh, members of the council, Alex Campbell, uh, city manager Pro Tem. Um, we have some upcoming events on April nineteenth. The Bear Creek Stewards Cleanup at Newbury Park at nine AM to noon. Um, sign up is required at, uh, stream-smart.com backslash bear dash creek dash clean dash ups. And on May third, there's a household hazardous waste collection event by Recology at Rogue uh, transfer station, uh, all day eight to four thirty. Details are at recology.com backslash recology dash Ashland. Um, the, uh, glad to ha- have Jackson County Fire District Five here tonight and also a reminder that, uh, they have defensible space assessments, uh, incentives. And that information is available at jcfdfive.com backslash wildfire. And a few more, uh, community notices about events. The Talent Garden Club is meeting April fifth at the Talent Library, nine to eleven thirty. Uh, Robin McKenzie will be speaking on saving the Western Monarch. Garden worker bees are, uh, another item is garden worker bees are seeking volunteers to help maintain Talents Pollinator Gardens Mondays from ten to noon. Um, you can find them on, uh, Facebook by searching for Talent Garden Club. Jackson County Long Term Recovery Group will be hosting an accessory dwelling unit workshop on July twelfth at the Phoenix Civic Center. There's a sign up for that event is at jccltrg.org backslash ADU dash workshop. And finally Rogue Food Unites is looking for volunteers to assist at the Thursday Neighbors Unite Farmers Market in Talent. And for more information on that, uh, you can go to roguefoodunites.org backslash volunteer dash.
Thank you, Alex. Are there any other community announcements? All right, seeing none, I'll move us to, uh, public testimony. Um, we do have some speaker request forms for this evening. I'll ask, uh, if you have any further other than the ones I have here.
Uh, mayor, we've only received two.
Okay, thank you, Hector. Uh, so the first speaker on, uh, on, uh, request one that I have is for Jason Clark. Jason, please come forward to the microphone and state your name and city for the record.
Hi, uh, Jason Clark, Talon Oregon, uh, mayor, members of council, members of the staff. Thank you for serving community as always. Um, I just wanted to, uh, pass on a little information. Um, uh, on Monday, I received a call from, uh, Brittany at the Oregon Department of Forestry's, uh, our community trees, uh, organization. And she said, yeah, I was looking over, um, Talents application for an Arbor Day Booster Grant and realized that, uh, the talent never turned into an application for, um, Tree City USA, uh, recertification, which was due on, um, uh, at the end of the year. Um, and, uh, she said that she had sent reminders, um, in September and I think two more in December, and that those went to, uh, T Humphrey at, uh, cityoftalent.org. Um, anyway, I, um, uh, found a, found an old blank application, um, and began filling, uh, that in and pulling together those materials. I sent those over to Alex. Uh, Alex, uh, was, uh, able to get logged in. I'm still not sure how I was not able to log in because I didn't know what the login was. Um, but, but Brittany basically said, you know, if, um, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll squeak in through the window if you get this in right away and, um, and, and hopefully not, um, uh, not, uh, remove your chances of being considered for the grant application. Um, so, um, yeah, this will be, I think, I believe, our twenty-sixth year as Tree City USA and, um, glad that we didn't got, glad that we didn't miss that opportunity. Um, but it just raised in my mind, what are other emails are going to T Humphrey or J Ruklin or G Milliman? And where are those going? And, and are we sure that, um, you know, that we're not missing other important things? So I just wanted to put that on the radar. Um, and just let you know, um, it is my expectation that we will be renewed to be, uh, a Tree City USA once again in good standing with the Arbor Day Foundation. So, uh, that's it.
Thank you. Next speaker is Kelly McGee. Is Kelly online?
Yes, Kelly's online.
Is that her or?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, great, um, so Kelly, if you'll state your name and your city for the record, please.
Yeah, Kelly McGee, uh, Ashland, Oregon. Um, good evening, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. Uh, like I said, my name is Kelly McGee and I'm here representing Oregon Shakespeare Festival to request your consideration for an exception to the city's noise ordinance. Uh, this is for an annual event that we're planning on Sunday, April twentieth at our production facility at four oh eight Talon Avenue. This event is a longstanding tradition for our organization to celebrate our hard work at the opening of our spring show, this year being a production of As You Like It. We're seeking an extension of the current nine PM curfew to eleven PM. Last year, we held a similar event and unfortunately we failed to submit a noise permit. This event was scheduled until midnight and as a result, Talent PD received a single complaint at eleven nineteen PM citing low bass noise. I submitted the necessary permit for this year, but it was recently denied by the chief of police. And after speaking with Chief Snook, she advised me that given there was only one complaint last year, I should come before the council to discuss the possibility of an exception. We are fully committed to being good neighbors and ensuring this event causes as little disruption as possible. This year, we plan to notify all of our neighbors in advance, ensuring that they're aware of the event and the revised end time. We will make every effort to be considerate of everyone's peace and quiet, particularly in the later hours of the evening. We are also aware that even with this permit, if there are any complaints, we will be asked to end the party early. And finally, we are open to discussion and compromise around this request and would be willing to meet and discuss any alternative ideas the council may have. I respectfully ask for your support in granting this exception and we appreciate your understanding and consideration of our request. Thank you very much for your time.
You. Okay, um, the next item on the agenda is special, special presentations. Five point one presentation by Fire District Five Annual Report.
All right. Uh, good evening, mayor, council and staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of Fire District Five. I'm Mike Hesse. I serve as fire chief for Fire District Three to the north end of the county. It's my privilege to serve as the fire chief for this community and Fire District Five right now. Uh, before you is a brief summary of the activity for Fire District Five last year. And it, just to, uh, kind of lay the landscape, Fire District Five services a hundred and thirty square miles, uh, from the Medford border, almost to the California line. There's twenty-seven thousand residents, uh, give or take. Last year, the organization provided service for three thousand twenty-eight calls total. Uh, that averages eight point two seven calls per day. Of that, one thousand seven hundred and eighty incidents or EMS in nature. Thirty-two vegetation fires and twenty-seven structure fires. And when we look at the structure fires, it's really important to note that our reporting standards are based on national standards. So if you burn your food in the oven, it's a structure fire for our reporting purposes. Doesn't mean that was a fully involved structure or there's flames coming out of a window. It could have been a chicken coop. It could have been an oven, uh, something confined to the oven, but it was within a structure. Uh, grass fires, vegetation fires, again, uh, largely those are roadside fires. So it speaks to the importance of, uh, roadside safety, not just the treatment of those fuels alongside the roadway, but also for towing vehicles, the proper maintenance of our vehicles. Uh, we can't provide the service without, uh, competent trained personnel. In the lower left corner of the training hours, we completed in twenty twenty-four. EMS one thousand three hundred and seventeen hours, twenty-eight ninety-four for fire. Thirty members conducted four thousand four hundred and thirty-four hours in twenty twenty-four. If you turn the page over, we issued a hundred and fifty-nine burden permits. This year, we went live with really an updated platform. We've, uh, this QR code on your document will let go and register your burn permit. What it also does is it gives us a real time map. And in the future, what we envision is an opportunity, uh, and I understand talent has regulations on burning, but for our community, when they choose to burn, they go in there and log it. And then we have real time information of where burns are because as we start looking through our data and we just were looking at some down to the south end, uh, our good intent calls, those means the smoke calls are a statistical value. It's about twelve percent of all the calls we go to are just good intent. Um, cell phones have, uh, really advanced that number. We conducted a hundred and five home wildfire assessments. And as mentioned earlier, there is some, uh, revenue. I just heard Tuesday that we are near the end of the Oregon State Fire Marshal's funding, uh, or available funding for wildfire home assessments. It doesn't mean that we'll discontinue doing them. The incentives, the cash incentives for those, uh, will dry up. Conducted seven station tour, nine hands only CPR classes taught. Uh, if you don't know CPR, please learn CPR. We just, uh, had another, uh, great success out here on the freeway. Forty-nine public education and school events. The middle of this page is, uh, just fun response data and there's not a good way to correlate, but by incidence a month, uh, June, July, August, uh, those are busy months. That's when the risk is greatest from wild wildfire. It's also when we see the most, uh, seasonal visitors to the region. Incidents by day a week, this one, not a lot of rhyme or reason. If you look at my district, my busiest day is Tuesday for Fire District Five. The slowest day this past year was Tuesday. And then incidents by hour of day, uh, this does follow industry trends, but we get busier about nine o'clock and then about nine o'clock at night, our call volume does subside. I have one community, uh, that we serve that the call volume actually comes up. And when you start considering where the economic base is and the, uh, residents going to work in other centers and then coming back, we start seeing calls shift just a little bit. It's important for us to depict this, though. This is how we staff. We try and identify the risk, the timing and, uh, align our staffing appropriately. In the bottom, incidents per response area, Station Three, which is the, uh, Phoenix Community, one thousand one hundred and seventy-six. Station Five, which is our talent community, one thousand four hundred and sixty-three. If you were to add all those, uh, up, you'll come to the forty-five ninety-one. Some of our incidents require more than one response on the front page. We mentioned we had three thousand twenty-eight alarms, but our apparatus rolled four thousand five hundred and ninety-one times, meaning about fifteen hundred of those times we sent more than one unit. Any questions on performance data for last year before I jump into the next topic? All right. Uh, you've been hearing over the past year, the Fire District is experiencing, uh, financial insecurity. It's the best way to put it. And just today, Rogue Valley Times released some of the data that we released on Saturday at a town hall, Station Four. Uh, simply put, over the past couple of years, suspending practices, uh, were established on non-rev, run, non-renewing grant funds and also over projected tax revenues. And at no time were those reset through there. Uh, the carryover in twenty-three, twenty-four, the tax, uh, revenue was overestimated by six hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. The estimated carryover was overestimated by about one point three million dollars in twenty-four, twenty-five. Tax revenue was overestimated by six hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. And remember, we overestimated it the year before. And so in a two-year budget, uh, we saw a, uh, revenue difference of one point three million dollars that wasn't corrected through the supplemental budget process. Ending fund balance for this past year was two hundred and, uh, two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars and that was borrowed funds. So in two years, we've gone from about three point two million dollars. And I'm saying we because I'm your fire chief and this is my responsibility right now. But we ended the fiscal year with two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars of borrowed funds. And it sounds bad and I'm not telling you guys it's good, but we are turning the corner. We're not sliding backwards anymore. We've identified where the deficiencies were. We can, a sustainable, uh, anticipated tax revenue and we're aligning personnel services with that tax revenue. Personnel services were about a hundred and fifteen percent of anticipated revenue. And we just gotta turn that around. We're working to reconsolidate the debt. We're sitting on a tax anticipation note of two point nine million dollars. Sorry, two point nine million dollars is what it took to get to November because we ended last fiscal year borrowing money. We're working to reconsolidate that debt. Uh, we got a couple, uh, lenders that are working with us and we do have, um, kind of a, I'll call it a plan to get forward and it's going to take two to three years until we can return to a sustainable service level. And I wanted to clarify or add context to what a sustainable service level. It's really important to me as a fire chief that I have the right number of people for safe and efficient service for the community and for them. And we know that sometimes, uh, they take vacation and sometimes they're out on an injury and I need to bolster those numbers. But working with the labor group right now, we've made some concessions for this lean time. And as we come into fire season, we're going to build our staffing back up. Uh, this isn't unique to this fire district. There's other fire districts in the state that are experiencing very similar. The rate of, uh, the, the cost of providing the service continues to escalate a little bit faster than the revenue comes in. And when you rely on grant funds to put people in your fire engines with no projected, uh, off-ramp, if you will, uh, it just forced borrowing. So in the past month, we made the tough decision to, uh, eliminate eight positions that were brought on by a non-renewing safer grant. That brings us back into a sustainable budget for this next year. What we need to do now is just determine what level of funding to overcome our near-term debt. What questions do you have for me?
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
Um, so when you say you're reducing, uh, force to, um, to catch up with the, to, to balance the budget, um, what are some of the, uh, I, I was under the impression that, that, uh, the fire department really staffed, uh, post, I'll meet a fire. Um, are you returning to the pre-fire levels or?
Yeah. Yeah, no, absolutely. And it's a great clarification that we're trying to, uh, highlight is we are returning back to the pre-two thousand twenty staffing levels. This, uh, Fire District is largely staffed and we call it two-two-two. That means two person, uh, two people on each engine through each of the three stations. And we're returning to that model. Once we can invest in additional, uh, people, pay the debt down first and then invest in the people, um, we'll upstaff. Likely you'll see upstaffing in the summer first, once we build the model, when we need them most. And then we'll continue to, uh, bolster the numbers on the apparatus. So yes, we're returning back to a tw- uh, pre-two thousand twenty staffing model.
That's my question. I guess what I would hope for is that when the board starts to contemplate whether or not to return to a three-three-three model, that they do some evaluation of safety on the two-two, you know, prior safety in this, in this region, uh, before twenty twenty and then, uh, whether or not that changed or, or improved when, when they went to a higher staffing level of three-three-three.
Yeah.
It's three-three-three, is that correct?
Well, it's three-three-three and really what it comes down to is there's an effective firefighter fighting force and it's how many do we put on the incident? And so you need a certain number of bodies to conduct the, uh, critical tasks. We're just, uh, having them arrive on more engines now so we can cover more calls and more square miles of the district versus if we were back to a three-three-three model, we may only need two units to mitigate the incident.
Yeah.
We just wouldn't have the coverage.
I appreciate that. I, I, I just, I guess what I'm asking for is that, uh, there, that there be an assessment about changing.
Absolutely.
If there's been a, an improvement in safety with increased staff or not.
Yep.
Um, I, I just don't recall there being any real safety issues when we were in like previous staffing levels. That's, um, thank you, I appreciate that. And then, um, my other question is, when you, uh, in the, in this report, which is great, by the way, I love these kind of reports, um, are you record the incidents based on, uh, calls that come through the, the system or?
Yeah, so the incidents reported are anything we were dispatched to, which would come either through the nine-one-one system. We call it on view. It's something we see and witness or a walk-in medical. Uh, we get a couple walk-ins, uh, monthly to somebody either driving by or they feel they're in closer proximity than calling nine-one-one. So it's any incident that generates a report for us.
Do you ever, do you guys maintain logs on when the trucks go out?
Yep.
And, and so it's always recorded when a truck goes out?
Well, did, are you saying for an alarm or if it runs over to get fuel or something else?
For any, any reason that if that a truck is out and in town for any reason, does it get recorded when the truck leaves the station?
No, we don't, uh, have any logs, but all of them are GPS equipped. And so we're always tracking the, the mileage driven and, uh, we always know basically where they've been daily.
Yeah, and I just want to close my question by thanking you for your great work. Um, we, we see it, it's noticed and we, we, we appreciate it.
Yeah, and, uh, I got a dedicated staff. We couldn't be doing it without the team back there and I want you to know, uh, they're all in. And, uh, I think Councilor Penemaro would agree, uh, they were there in support of the community the other day. We're gonna bring their talent forward, assess a little bit of patience as we rebuild this, but we can turn it around.
Are you talking about the staff from the Department of Five?
Di- District Three.
District Three.
Yeah, so we have, we have seven members that are, uh, assigned to this right now.
All right, man. Uh, Councilor Penemaro?
Yeah, I, I completely second that. Um, I'm wondering if you could also, uh, tell about, um, the audit situation for Fire District Five and I'm also curious about as, as Fire District Five tries to turn this corner financially and the, the debt, um, how has the, the auditing situation affected the interest rates and how much the Fire District has to pay back?
Yeah, it's a really good question. So the Fire District hasn't completed a audit since, uh, twenty-two. And so part of the agreement, uh, with Fire District Three was we wanted to make sure we were audit ready, at least. We needed to have a hard number to start our financial practices on. Again, Fire District Three is coming in and we're standing. Again, Fire District Three is coming in, and we're standing up all of our policies and practices in parallel to Fire District Five right now. So from financial policies to our financial suite and software programs, our training programs are all in parallel. We need a starting point. So Rick Brewster's office gave us a clean set of books, if you will. We knew where to start. But what we're finding is we shop the consolidated debt. Not having audits for the last three years makes it really difficult, and the district's a little bit of a credit risk. We're leaning into Fire District Three, not their credit, but the name and using Special Districts Association to help us market it just a little bit. Developing that recovery plan is going to be really important and exhibiting a little bit of trust as they link forward. The audit for twenty two, twenty three, I think it might be the same vendor you're using, Polly Rogers. The auditor assigned to us resigned, and we were just assigned a new one. So we're hoping to start the or really complete the twenty two, twenty three. We're ready to start the twenty three, twenty four and likely be ready for twenty four, twenty five by the time that one's concluded.
I have one more question.
Yeah.
It's going to sound tougher than I mean it. I hope you take it with the intention that I mean.
I'm okay.
Okay, thank you. I don't think the the community has heard a recovery plan. And so when you refer to a recovery plan, I don't think, I think what I my constituents are saying is we don't know what the future of District Five is going to be. And is there a time in the near future that we're going to hear from the department about whether or not consolidation is what's in mind? Or is there going to be the additional tax revenues that are going to need to be raised to save the department? Or or is the department going to go on and and recover and move forward? Like, are you guys any closer to coming up with a plan and 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 how will that be shared with the community?
Yeah, so we're talking with the Board of Directors with about six different options. Some of them are less complex than others, but most of them would engage the community at some point. Regardless of it's a merger, an annexation, or a consolidation, that's going to require the vote of your community. And so we would be putting forward some options. If we consider additional revenue, additional levy or tax, that goes before the voters as well. Really, you will see nothing in this next year. And I know Director Bullcart has been steadfast and trained to help with potential solutions that represent your community the best way. Just frankly, we're running into a little bit of a fiscal cliff right now. We got to determine what we're going to do to get before July one. The service won't stop. The goal is to ensure that the community doesn't see a decline in service. We just don't know where the funding is going to come from.
So my my follow-up question to that is, do you foresee when you will know that? And when we can hear more about?
Yeah, we're going to have to make a decision April, May, somewhere in the next sixty days.
Any other questions? Thank you again. Oh, I do have one more question, I'm sorry.
No.
We don't get this opportunity often, so I want to take advantage. And I know there's a lot of people that are interested in what's happening there. I, you know, I I've had a chance to read some of at least the written budgets, and I saw so much funding, so much of the funding going to staff and benefits. And and some of it was shocking really to see. How do you foresee in these changes that you're moving to to make adjustments with? Not just reducing in staff, but it seems like there's so much more to that staffing question in terms of like the costs for for staff? Like, are there additional discussions that are happening other than just reducing staff?
So, yeah, everything's on the table right now. We're mid-cycle of a labor agreement. The labor agreement opens up in the spring of next year. And really, I can't foreshadow what those conversations are going to look like. But everything in the current package is bound by the collective bargaining agreement. I'll acknowledge that budget is confusing, and one of our goals is to add transparency to it. And not just try to transparency, but commonplace terms to some of the line items in this last fiscal report. And it's posted on our our financial reports posted on the website. Go through and look at it, and we tried to put there's more line items to give the reader more clarity to where the funds are going. So when you just have one lump sum of six million dollars, it doesn't tell the whole story of where those funds are going.
Yeah, you can find some of it, though. You know, I I have experience with that department. And I guess I just want to say, I know on behalf of my constituents, the people that the people that I talk to, we're not just concerned about the size of our fire department. We're also concerned that reductions could be caused by just, you know, the over expenditures on staff as well. Like, there's that balance, right? Of how much, how much are we paying for staff? What are the benefits that they're receiving? And how is that causing compression on our ability to have the right number of staff? So I'm excited to hear you're going into negotiations. We've got your back, and we really wish you well in that in that process. Yeah, there's a lot to work out.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And again, thank you for the support. And I know our our motto down there, and it's very similar to the one you guys are, is we're here to improve the quality of life in a community. If we're doing our job right, you wouldn't have to call nine one one. And so a lot of our investment is reducing the risk first, and then we'll respond when we need.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Counselor Perry Miller?
Thank you, just really quick. We're a big fan of town halls too. So I know you guys just had one at Station Four, but we would love to host a talent one, when the time is right, so.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, and I'd also like to express my gratitude to Count or to Director Volkart. Honestly, we have had an opportunity to work with him a great deal in our community and and the work that he did bringing some of these issues to the fore so that they could be solved instead of continuing to erode. This community owes a great deal of gratitude to Director Volkart.
Yeah, he's representing.
Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is six point one appointment of a member to the Budget Committee staff.
Mayor and counsel, this is a performative appointment. Neri Garcia has applied and been interviewed, and her application is in the agenda packet. She's interested in serving on the Budget Committee for the sixth and final membership.
Can I ask you what you mean by performative?
I'm I'm sorry, mayor, I used the incorrect term there. It's just the the process.
Yeah, okay, very good. Yes, so all of the interviews have happened, and I would you know, a motion to ex- accept the mayoral appointment of the Nerea Garcia to the Budget Committee. Counselors?
Um, I move to affirm the mayoral appointment of Nerea Garcia as a regular member of the Budget Committee for a four-year term beginning March nineteenth, twenty twenty five. Second.
We have a motion and a second to affirm the mayoral appointment of Nerea Garcia to the Budget Committee. What's for the term is read into the record. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Counselor Colley?
Yes.
Counselor Penomar?
Yes.
Counselor Medina?
Yeah.
Counselor Pestejo?
Yes.
Counselor Byers?
Yes.
Counselor Priya Miller?
Yes.
And Mayor, Mayor, you have motion carries.
Thank you, Hector. The next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. Is there anything on the consent calendar that anybody wants to pull out for further discussion? Hey, any questions or comments on the consent calendar? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Counselor Colley?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Counselor Colley?
Yes.
Counselor Penomar?
Yes.
Counselor Medina?
Yeah.
Counselor Pestejo?
Yes.
Counselor Byers?
Yes.
And Counselor Priya Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries, mayor.
Thank you, Hector. Item number eight on the agenda is unfinished business. There is none. Item number nine is new business. Nine point one is acknowledgement of the audit financial report for fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four staff report.
Thank you, Ma- Mayor, members of the council. Again, on behalf of Finance Direct Testus Line, I would like to introduce Chris Odell, who has audited the city's books for many years and is here to share with you the results of the twenty three, twenty four audit.
All right, thank you. So yeah, I'll keep this one extra brief since we kind of went over with the U R A. But it's going to be the same sort of process, but on a on a different scale for the city, obviously. But same idea with compliance with cash basis of accounting and Oregon Municipal Audit Law. So I'll just get into the results. So the city was issued an unmodified opinion, so that's a clean opinion with no reservations. We had no, there's no exceptions or issues requiring comment on the state minimum standards. And there is no separate management letter issued, which means there weren't any significant efficiencies or material weaknesses in internal control that would be required to disclose to counsel. And yeah, thanks again to Tessa and Leslie for all their hard work, as always. They were excellent to work with, and we didn't have any issues with audit. So, yeah, guys, have any questions? I can take those.
I don't see any questions. Thank you so much for.
Yeah, thank you.
So I'll entertain a motion. Oh, we don't need to, we don't acknowledge by motion?
It it just says on the location all the way.
Okay.
No motion necessary.
Thank you. I don't have the packet open at the same time, so let's see if I can get to the items here.
That, Mayor, that that's definitely my reading of the staff report as well. And we'll be sure to return to you if we need a more formal action.
Oh, no, it's fine. I, you know, the 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 motions are in the packet, and and I don't have the packet in the paper copy. So it's one of those things where deciding and reading following along the packet is a unique challenge. I'm going to get there in just one second there. Very good. All right, item number nine point two is the City Council's goals, priorities, and action plan for fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six staff report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, Alex Campbell. What I wanted to share with you all today and and receive feedback from you on is a next version of the goals document. You all provided a lot of input on at our study session. I did my best to capture that and also do a couple things that I I hope make the document easier to digest, which was to use the same parallel structure for the summary as as for the detailed action items and also to try to match the action items at a similar level of detail so that the so eliminating things that are overly general and and generalizing some things that would seem to me to be a little bit more specific than we want in this document. And then I I think I'll start, I'll start on the summary page and also note that I I added the sort of preamble that that several of y'all suggested might be appropriate to clarify or to to define some specific goals of the council, one for this council itself as a body. And so I included that you would, of course, want to support the the staff in in carrying out this plan and be providing sufficient, efficient and good services, establishing the sort of the client, the welcoming climate of of the city and the advocacy role that you all discussed at that session. And and also included your role in in fiscal responsibility. You know, that that's obviously woven through this document, but ultimately it's your, it's your role, right? As as the adopters of the budget to 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 direct us and make sure that we're we're doing that in the manner you wanted. So maybe I'll I'll pause there and see if the if I captured what you all wanted.
Any comments? Counselor Penomar?
I I'll just say, I think it's it's very well written and addressed what we wanted to address, so thank you.
All right, so I I regrouped the the action items in in five different areas. So improving the fiscal condition of the city would be one. Making sure that we execute some real high priority, high-profile projects is the second. Improving the our internal systems, continue to improve internal systems so that we are efficiently providing services. I grouped several items under stewardship, so that's particularly the infrastructure, being good stewards of the of the assets that the the city owns. And not just the assets the city owns, but the assets of the city, including the natural resources of the city. And then a fifth, a fifth area that's really more about preparing for the future. Because of course, the we we want to be forward looking as there's important work that's coming towards us. So it makes, I I'd be happy to. I think, I think what might make sense, oh, please, yeah, I have to pause.
Yeah.
Counselor Penomar?
Thank you. I like these very much as well, and I I appreciate your talent for grouping these things, I think, in a really helpful ways. The very first one, rather than improve the fiscal condition, I would say maintain a good fiscal condition or something like along those lines because I think we are in good shape. We do have to adjust to having, you know, had a lot of grant money, FEMA money as a result of the disaster kind of inflate our budget to weird highs. But I think all through that, it has been managed as well as could be managed. And just wanted to use a word that, you know, gave the impression that we have been doing a good job for many years, thanks to staff. And that's, that's all.
Great, thank you. I I I would happily accept your suggestion and also note that I think the language for improve was coming from more the long, long range, the sort of five-year projections in the budget. And so I would agree that sort of year to year that the fiscal condition is currently good, but that to continue might may might need some some changes, yeah.
I think what I heard is maintain and improve as suggested language. Anybody object to that? All right, very good. And I appreciate both of those points.
So I I might step through each of those those areas and but not not in excruciating detail. But probably cover them at the level of goals and and expect that you all may raise action items that you would like to potentially improve. And as I I, as I go to this level, I I should make clear that there's a a font on the last page. I kept a record of anything that I had eliminated and why.
Yeah, Counselor Penomar?
So I I'm just wanted, as we look at this, I want to, I'm just going to ask you to remind me of what the spreadsheet looked like before in terms of how much information. I think the notes section on the right is something that you all new information that you have added.
The notes section was was there. I've I've added there a bit more in terms of notes than than was there previously. There was also a sort of related to column that I found a little distracting and found that I wasn't, I wasn't making use of, and it seemed like it was it was taking up space on the on the page. But I I otherwise, there there aren't. otherwise, there, there aren't, there isn't anything significant in terms of format change. So in the, improving the fiscal condition of the city, I, I broke those into goal one, the fee update that we've discussed as, as tackling as part of this budget year. Goal two, seeking additional administrative efficiencies. And this was where I sort of, I, I bent my own rule a little bit. I, I think that, that is a fairly, it's a broad category, a broader category than, than much of this other work. But I, I think it's important enough that I was comfortable bending that, bending that rule and, and wanted to make clear that there were a lot of things that we should be doing annually, you know, review, reviewing that we're efficiently delivering services, looking at in-house versus contracting in key areas and cost of, cost of benefits and that kind of thing. So I grouped several things there. Goal three, I, I put increased revenues, which may have been bold and might say, might better be consider increased revenues. But my understanding is there, I think we, at a very minimum, we need to consider increased revenues. And I, I, I added a sort of a first step where we would provide for you all a menu of, of what, what areas do you think we might want to explore more specifically?
Counselor Penomaroff?
Yes, I liked seeing that, the, the revenue options menu. I think that's great that we could learn more about what other cities are doing. I was surprised to see the effort level low. It seems to me that there'd be quite a bit of research involved and, but happy to see that as an item. I'm just wondering why would that be low effort level?
I think, I think the options themselves are pretty clear, frankly. And I think I would expect the, the level of effort to certainly be higher once you all selected a few that you really wanted to dig into. Yeah, so this would, this would be more about directing staff's attention. And so, for instance, that revenue options, right, might include looking at, making sure that we're collecting transient lodging tax and our transient lodging tax ordinance is compliant such that we need it to be and we're enforcing it. That's, there's certainly plenty of work to do there, but simply defining where, what the possible areas of work are, I think is pretty, pretty straightforward. There, there's not an unlimited number of, of different things that the city could pursue.
Um, would this be something you'd hire a consultant to do?
No, I think this is something that, that Tessa and I, and I mean, we certainly want to reach out and have some conversations with some other jurisdictions to make sure that we're not missing things, but there, as I said, the League of Oregon City does a really good job sort of laying out a lot of these areas. So I think it's.
Thank you for that initiative. Alex, can I back us up just a little bit?
Please.
Uh, to goal one, fee update. It occurs to me, and I could be wrong, but I feel like it might be a good effort to add a fee policy review to that as well. I mean, I, what occurs to me is like, how many policies do we have? Are they all germane? Is there, is there some that might need update? Is there ways that we can consolidate policy, fee schedule policies and things like that? Or, or not, not just consolidate, but maybe also make them consistent throughout, are there ways that we can create consistencies? So I wonder if the council would consider a, a fee policy review, perhaps even in front of doing a fee update.
I, I, if I, if I may, talk a little, what we're, we're currently envisioning would be bring, to bring to you a document that enumerates all the fees that we're currently charging. And if I may be a little frank, wherever we have a clear record of the basis for that fee, note that. And some, some of the Marby practice in, in the city has a fair amount of latitude under Oregon statute to recover costs. So I, I don't think it's anything that we need to be embarrassed about if there are a few fees that we, that we don't have a specific ordinance to attach to, but that we would provide you all a complete list of what the fees are currently and what we are proposing to take them and that you adopt that by, by ordinance annually. So we have a clear document that provides sort of the, the backing for, for the fees. If you'd like us to take a step back and sort of explicate that approach and/or how we come to, I think, I think the policy of how you set each fee is a pretty voluminous document and maybe, and we may need to tackle it at some point. I'm, I'm confident that we wouldn't be able to complete that for this, this budget, this budget cycle.
So maybe we just begin that work, but yeah, you would know that. You all know that much better than I do. But it is the constraints that flag me to that, to that thought. And, and I just would add that if you guys are looking for records, sometimes it's a good idea to ask to check with me because I sometimes have the record in my mail, my email. And, and I've found that sometimes we can find it there. Just because I might have it as part of a packet or something like that. Counselor Penomaroff?
Yeah, I, I really like, oh, I just have to say again, I like all the work Tess has been doing as far as figuring out the cost of service and balancing that with these, that's exceptional. My memory is that these fees usually get set in a resolution and there's usually a very, very thick study done by a consultant to basically justify that. And in those, in, in those studies, they tend to show history and future projections. I'm hoping that as a result of this, it wouldn't be too hard to show our residents the fees, but also the history of the fees of, you know, so they can see, oh, this went up. Oh, well, it hadn't gone up for years and years. But to be able to demonstrate that, I think RVSS has a nice example. They, they break down their fees, they explain their fees in a way that's very customer friendly. So I, I think that if we can gather the data for a nice presentation like that as we do this work, I think our residents would be would be happy about that.
Yeah, and I, I just, to close my point, I appreciate the plan that you just stated. I don't want to belabor this, but if there is room for us to look at the body of, of policies at some point in time, and I mean, I just know that they get so inconsistent over time and look for areas to make those more efficient or more, again, consistent. Whenever you think that that's a good time to do that, I'm happy for that. So I'll take, take us back to where you were on the agenda. Thank you.
Well, thank, thank, thank you both. And I, I would like just to agree with the Counselor Penomaroff. When I say that there may be some that we don't have a really clear record of, I'm not talking about a utility fee or a system development charge. I think there, there may be some, you know, some planning charges, a lot of different fees for very, very, they're very fine grained sometimes, so. But absolutely, I'm confident that we've got the utility fees and the S D C's backed, backed up. And so depending upon where, where the council discussion goes on revenue options. My expectation is that we, we need to be doing some public engagement over the next year about the condition of the general fund. And I, I don't want, I, this, you know, this item particularly calls out the possibility of raising additional fees for, for public safety. And I, I just wanted to take it up one level from there, acknowledging that public safety from a fiscal standpoint, right, is part of our general fund and it's, but there are, there are options that we could address. There are ways that we could, multiple ways to address it, and some of it is addressing at the fund level, some it would be addressing particularly the public safety fee. And I think, I think it'd be helpful for the public discussion to really be talking about the general fund as a whole. So there's some work that, as you mentioned, Counselor, Tessa has begun in several of our utility areas that we need to continue to work through the other utility areas. Both, both regular rates and, and system development charges. And goal, goal four is financial policies and, and Tess has been implementing some of those. We have more that we, that we want to, want to put in place and consolidate into, into a, a single document. Should I pause there or move on to the, to the second section?
Second section being goal four?
Sorry, I was thinking about going to execution of priority projects. Okay, so of course, probably don't, unless you all want, would like, I don't think there's necessarily a lot of detail to do here. We're going to talk later tonight about the process to get talent, Community Resource Center going. And the, the Gateway Project has a lot of moving parts and we, you know, the, I think the key, the key next steps are pretty obvious. It's to, to make sure that we, we deal fairly and, and justly with the folks who are living there. And, and get the site ready for development and to go ahead and start designing of, of what will be the next phase of life for that site. So I might, I might move to the, the internal systems. And so in, in that, we, we group them by, by really working on our systems by which we we record, organize policies. And that's, that's, that's a wide range of policies from personnel handbook and we just got an offer that we weren't current, already taking advantage of, CIS does do a free review of personnel handbook. And so Tess has asked them to start doing that. That's, that's definitely a high priority, getting, getting that up to date from a liability standpoint.
Quick question?
Yeah.
CIS, that's our insurer?
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Yeah. Um, a a, this, there's important detail here, but I won't, I don't think I'll belabor it tonight. In tune, in terms of communicating better with the public, obviously taking the steps to improve our website is, is the first, the first priority there. You all had previously identified and not necessarily put in the current year, you know, future assessment of the, the overall communications practices and, and what, what we would need to be doing, sort of in addition to what we are currently doing or I think, and or assessing how effective we are in what we are currently doing and reaching sort of the variety of, of folks who do live here in town. I don't see us getting to that this coming year, so I, I've listed some things as out here projects. But of course, acknowledging that there, if they're, if they appear in this document, they're important regardless of what year they're, they're, they're proposed for.
Counselor Penomaroff?
Um, so what do we mean by out here? Do we just mean not this year or out a year?
Yeah, yeah, I just mean, I, I'm, I'm, I'm confident it's not this year, but I'm not sure exactly which year it is. And then continuing to, to support the committees and commissions, I think Hector's made a lot of strides there as we talked at the study session, but I think there's still, still room for clarity among some, some of the policies. And, and we talked at the study session about kicking that off with a presentation from the city attorney with some of the questions he would pose to you all. Then I might move on to the, the stewardship of asset, of assets. There's, there's a lot that could go in here, you know, I think our, sort of our, our our entire, a lot, a lot of the city work, right, really falls in, in, in this realm. So, so but what, what I've got here are some particular projects. So the, the the replacement of, and the improvement of our metering system and the water system is happening this year. And it's going to be a big project, not just for utilities, but also the integration into the finance system to make sure that we can bill accurately and efficiently from it. And then the facilities plan, I think, is, is also something really important. And as, as we, as came up during discussion of the Historic Town Hall, right, we, we're talking about a number of changes that we really need a global view about where, where we want to be and what, and what, what functions in which buildings. I, but a, a natural resources management piece here where I included both the weed control and fuel reduction. Forestry Master Plan, Citywide Water Conservation and Counselor Penomaroff, what, one of the very few additions to this document beyond the last one, it's the final item here, beginning implementation of the clean energy element of the, of the comp plan. I don't see us getting it to, to it this, this year to be blunt, but I, I, I it makes a lot of sense to me that, that's, that's, you know, what needs to be on, on the, on, on deck. And Counselor Calle, I, I will note that I, I eliminate the goal of increased tree canopy as I felt that was just a bit too big as a, as a city goal. And I, I don't know how I would measure that, our success on that, when, when we reach success.
I think there, of course, you can be able.
I'm, I'm going to pass on, on the, on the next section, the land use and transportation planning, oh, please.
Sorry, I just want to go back to the clean energy element of the comp plan. I I wonder if the goal that we get set for this year is really just outlining a plan of how we'll attack it next year. And so we have put off this element year after year after year. It always falls low on the priority and it, it wasn't a low priority when we passed it. I'm, I'm wondering, you know, if included in that plan could be some sort of, like, perhaps knowing when, if, if a rare participant would be helpful, they have been in the past. And then, and then if so, when applying for that would make sense, but maybe if we can just get like an action plan in place. For, I certainly appreciate diving into it this year. I might not be, but maybe planning for it would be, or could be. Counselor Penomaroff?
Yeah, I'm, I'm still stuck a little bit about the tree canopy. I think I, I feel like that should be on here. Is there something else that kind of relates to, I see established urban forestry master plan? Is that, is that kind of the, where we're at?
I feel like the urban forestry master plan was kind of a global view of that and that plan is like
Talks about the tree canopy. Okay.
Can it be? So I think that.
Right, because that, that gives us lots of bragging points when I go around. Thank you.
Counselor Pustizov?
I just want to note there, I don't think we'll talk about it tonight, but if you're interested, there is a way that we can measure the canopy in the city on annual, or maybe annuals too often, it's too much change, but there is a way if you want to do it.
Monthly.
Not monthly.
Daily.
Daily. Having a little track.
Go like this, you know, in the winter it's down and.
Yeah. Well, you could if you wanted to.
Um, if I, if I might really skip the next page. Your council have requested a, a detailed dive into, into this topic. And so I've got some great input from Joshua Bonbar, the D L C D today about how, how we should be tracking this. So my plan would be either to, either to do a separate session or, or focus on this the next time we, we look at the goals document. So my plan would be either to, either to do a separate session or focus on this the next time we look at the goals document.
Yeah, I, I totally agree with that. I just wanted to point out that, because you have it yellow highlighted at the bottom, the maintain NFIP good standing. I think that's the National Flood Plane Insurance Program, is that right?
Exactly, apologies for the abbreviation.
Okay, and the reason that's important, in case people don't know.
Yeah, so the ci, the city has an important role in regulating a development in the floodplain. And part of the incentive to do that, not just, well, there are two primary incentives to do that. One is to be a good environmental steward, and the second is that doing that successfully reduces flood insurance rates for those residents that, that need it. And we, we are up for our, our review of, of the program to certify cities.
Is it every year or?
It's not every year, but so our, we, our, our turn has come up, yeah.
Thank you.
So the, and we've moved into sort of the preparing for the future portion of, of the, of the goal. So the, the next one I find was disaster preparedness and mitigation and climate change mitigation. So the fire wise and fire resistant community work would be here. The emergency operations plan work would be here. And, yeah. And I think that the, the update of the EOP and continuing to expand partnerships with other jurisdictions would be where I, I would expect to focus this, this coming year. Do, would, would expect the, to highlight a budget, a budget ask related to that EOP that the police department, which is responsible for this, has a professional services budget of about $7,000. This would be, you know, this would be that a couple of times over. And so if we, if we want to, if we want to get it done this year, I don't think we could just rely on staff finding the time to do it. Moving on to the, is this, this is the last section. The, and I, I grouped, I grouped what had been both parks and economic development here, which may be a funny way to look at it, but I think fundamentally economic development is about create, to be successful is about creating places where people want to be. And I think that's, that's true of parks as well. So we, we will, you all, I will be bringing the opportunity assessment, the economic opportunity assessment to you all. And Mayor, he suggested build, building an economic development plan. I, I, I split the baby to some extent here. I didn't, I didn't put it in the future fiscal year, but I put it in the second half of this fiscal, this coming fiscal year. And then with public assets, including the park, I included the, the town hall here, Chuck Roberts redevelopment. And, and also the, the work on private exploring new and potentially philanthropic based, foundation based approaches for raising money for folks. So I, I, based on the amount of feedback today, I, I, I hope I, I might, I would propose to you all that perhaps I bring this document back with the, with the planning element more fully spelled, spelled out. And that we may be, we may be close to, to adoption. But if that, that makes sense to you all, that would be the way I would perceive.
Counselor Penomar?
I just wanted to say, I really love the way you've organized these in the groupings. It almost kind of comes to life a little bit more for me as I read through it. So I think there's, there's a lot of logic to it. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right. You know, I just want to throw one thing out here because I'm not sure if it, it would rise to the level of a goal or not. But, but as we have, as we have, developed more clear and objective standards for the planning commission, they have had less review of the work that we've done. And there was a time where the planning commission was actually the architectural review committee. And I almost wonder if it would help, for one thing, I think at some point in time, we should look at all the committees and commissions and see if we can consolidate some of the work. The number of commissions and committees can be, can be challenging at times. But in that thought process, I wonder if it would be appropriate to start that discussion as part of the goal setting. And of course, I'd want to hear from the planning commission on, on this. I really haven't even discussed it with, I haven't even proposed the idea to the commission itself. But we once had those two, the architectural review was once a part of the planning commission. And it worked pretty well, but it, it seemed like the challenge was that there was a big huge workload. And so it was divided up for, for more efficiency. And I wonder as things start to shift, if there's a good place to consolidate. I'd certainly again want to hear from the planning commission on that, but, but I wonder if this is the right time to bring that up.
I, I, I would think that considering that, you know, that we're, that we're starting in the right place for considering that, which would be sort of the, the global, I think some of the global questions that the city attorney would like to pose to you all would be a good context for starting that discussion. So I can, I can make sure that we note that, that that's part of that discussion.
Yeah, thank you. All right, is there any further discussion on this item? Thank you. I agree with Counselor Penomar, this is shaping up nicely. Item number 9.3 is approval of the Urban Forestry Committee Arbor Day Recommendation Staff Report.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Feel like I'm once again standing in front of Jason Clark and the committee's work. But the, the committee has requested the council's approval and direction of, of staff to support a Arbor Day celebration on April 5th. It would include plantings, some additional irrigation, drip irrigation out there and, and the reading of a proclamation. And I will additionally note that the, the, the Parks Commission had an opportunity to, to review and contribute to, to the plan. And I look forward to any questions that you all might have. And I'm sorry, as I, I was trying to wrap up gracefully, even though I'm realizing we did not list in the attachments, the email. So the final page of this section is, is a email from the Parks Commission, knowing their support for this proposal. So that's there.
Any comments or questions? All right, hearing none, I will entertain a motion. Counselor Colay?
I move to direct the city manager to support an Arbor Day event with staff time and Parks Department funds or city council discretionary funds.
Second. We have a motion and a second to direct city staff to support an Arbor Day event with staff time and Parks Department funds or city council discretionary funds. Parks Department? That's what it does now. Is there any further discussion? I just have one question. I, I should have asked it before the motion. How, do we know where the funds are going to come from? Where they, where they're going to come out of? Have, have we looked into that yet?
And I, my, my apology, so I didn't, I, what, my intention was to explicitly ask for the council's direction on which, which of these funds you'd prefer that the relatively nominal cost of this project comes out of. So we do have, we have, certainly have sufficient funds in Parks Department. Or it could, if the council chose to be, come out of the council discretionary.
And the balance in the discretionary fund, you know that? Okay, if you don't.
You're not.
That's a just left, so that's okay. I, I do want to note that the staff report says that there's a grant for 1250. Do we know, do we know if we are going to get that? I mean, do we have an answer on that yet?
We do not have an answer on that. We, they, they promised an answer really quickly. But we, we do not.
Right, so you're still looking for a, a decision on which fund that should come from?
And, and if the motion passes as proposed, I think you're leaving it in my hand, in my hands. And I think I would probably use the Parks Fund. So I don't think there's any need to revise unless, unless you specifically want to use council discretionary.
Thank you, Alex. Counselor Perry Miller?
Um, my memory of that fund is not good, but I, I would think that my memory is that we have not spent much of that this year and.
Much of what?
Council discretionary. And so I would actually say I'd be pretty comfortable with going for council discretionary first. And if that doesn't cover the balance, then looking at the Parks funding.
Counselor Colay?
I would second that statement too, especially just in the discussion that was had with the Parks Commission was really to get their approval of the project in general and wasn't about funding per se. Doesn't mean that we couldn't use Parks Funds, but that's what we discussed in that meeting.
Right. Counselor Penomar?
No, I, I just kind of have the, the opposite take. I feel this is for the parks and Parks Fund seems to be the logical place, but I'm not going to fight over it.
Should we, should we leave it up to the city?
Let's leave it up to this.
Based on, based on the health of the, of both of those budgets, I would imagine is how you look at it.
But if it's council, we give the credit. For the beautiful work.
That just means we spent more of our money.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call please.
Counselor Colay?
Yes.
Counselor Penomar?
Yes.
Counselor Medina?
Yeah.
Counselor Pesci.
Yes.
Counselor Byers?
Yes.
Counselor Paramiller?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you. So this big $2,000 decision is in your hands, Alex. We trust that you'll.
Might be only 750.
Actually 750. Thank you.
I hope so. There's another motion on there.
Okay, I'll entertain a second motion. Counselor Colay?
I move to approve the attached proclamation of Arbor Month, April 2025.
Second, we have a motion and a second to approve the attached proclamation of Arbor Month, April 2025. Is there any further discussion? Roll call please.
Counselor Colay?
Yes.
Counselor Penomar?
Yes.
Counselor Medina?
Yes.
Counselor Pesci though?
Yes.
Counselor Byers?
Yes.
Counselor Paramiller?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you, Hector. Next time I'm on the agenda is presentation of the planning commission recommendations. Staff?
Thank you, Mayor. We invite planning commission chair Derek Volcott to present this side.
Hello, everyone. Good to see you. I was assigned as a representative to the council by the planning commission at the last meeting to bring these items to you. And it's funny how I think I recall motions very accurately. And, and then I reread them and I'm like, oh wow, I, I, I don't. So it's like, I think I need to start traveling with them more. I wanted to address one of the things here. On the first one, for trying to get information for the planning commission, it's been really helpful. And I want to thank staff for giving us access to the old website through Project Day. That's been really helpful because I was on it even today, looking at projects. And I noticed 210 North Pacific Highway Site Plan Review, which one was it? 2021 015. The, where the final order wasn't captured. It's been, somebody's gone in and repaired it, which is great that, that was fixed.
Chair, can I, can I direct you back to the, to the item that's on the agenda?
Sure, yeah. And so that's what I'm referring to is that it's, it's been really useful to have that updated. And so the only one, the one thing I wanted to note on that for getting information, it was either discussed. If it wasn't in the motion, it was maybe discussed, is that at pre-application conference that the commission would be notified. And, and so the, the reason that's really important at pre-application conference time is because those are not captured online. So it's not on our website. It was never on the old website, despite Site Plan Review language historically saying that it would come to the planning commission. So that's, that sort of initiates the process. And that's, would be where a planning commissioner might be looking to engage on a project and be looking for that initial meeting. You look confused, Madam Mayor, so, okay, maybe not.
I'm not confused. I'm just trying to tie it into the, the, the motions that you are here to represent.
Okay, so I'm reading from the first motion, which was direct staff to include notification of members of the planning commission when providing public notices of pending and completed type two administrative decisions. And I'm just trying to explain why that, happening at the pre-application conference time is the important time to be captured. So, okay, and then while certainly, I think everyone at the commission is curious about the legal opinion on number two regarding the possibility of a pause or moratorium on cluster housing. I would say, I think after meeting with Commissioner Riley recently, that we need, we have a lot more work to do on seeing exactly what's wrong with the cluster housing ordinance. And I do not, after discussions with her and reviewing the gangness cluster housing project, I don't see it as a pressing decision. So if you chose to, I am curious about the legal opinion. I think the whole commission is. But if you chose to remand that, or just let us continue to research it more, that would be useful. And then finally, I think number three speaks for itself. So I think the commission's also curious about that because with the plethora of many storage units in town, we, we'd like to hear on that. So thanks for letting me ramble.
I would like to invite you to the dais for this discussion because I think after we hear from the city attorney, if there's any further questions that we want, may want you to bring back, we'd like to have you at the dais.
Okay, I'll take a seat.
Dave? Oh, wait a minute, let me ask, does anybody, Jack, I mean, do I consent to the account for the bring, to bring the chair? Okay, I want to make sure I'm not, yeah. Yeah, go ahead, Alex.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, if, I, I think Dave's going to speak to the second and third items. And if I could speak to the first item, just to, just to clear up my, why what is here was here relative to Commissioner Volcott's statement. There were, there was certainly discussion of the, of pre-app notice at, at the, at the planning commission meeting. I didn't hear that as part of the, the motion. And I was relieved that it wasn't because I, I, that to me really blurs the, the commission and staff role. Whereas providing notice of, of, of things that we provide notice to the public of is clearly, you know, very appropriate. They're clearly, the line commission members are members of the public, but pre-apps are, are notice, are typically noticed to other agencies. And so anyway, that, I just want to clarify. I heard that part of the discussion, but I didn't. One is, I don't think it was actually part of the motion.
Dave?
I think with respect to the possible moratorium on, on our cluster housing rules, there are several considerations to take into account. And I will just quickly mention these and it's probably useful to think about in general about moratoria. But the rules on moratoria. the rules on moratoria are set pretty clearly and in detailed fashion in ordinance. Ordinance 197, I mean, in statute, ORS 197.520. And a quick summary of those rules is a moratorium must be adopted by ordinance following at least one council public hearing. The LCD has to be given 45 days' notice prior to the final public hearing, where you might consider adoption of a moratorium. Written findings justifying the need for a moratorium are needed to demonstrate that A, there's a compelling need. B, existing development ordinances are inadequate to prevent irrevocable public harm. Third, the need cannot be met by alternative methods. Fourth, that sufficient resources are available so that work can be done during the moratorium to make progress towards solving the problem that the moratorium was intended to address. And that, finally, that impact on property owners, housing, and economic development can be minimized. And specifically without, the fifth item, that the needed supply of affected housing types would not be unreasonably restricted by the moratorium. And secondly, the public harm which would cause, be caused by failure to impose a moratorium outweighs the adverse effects on other affected local governments, including shifts in demand for housing or economic development. The initial length of a moratorium cannot be more than 120 days. However, that can be extended for an additional, up to an additional six months after again, 10 days' notice to LCDC, a public hearing, and adoption of additional findings for why there needs to be an extension. And in that, we would have to justify why the moratorium still exists and show the reasonable progress being made towards addressing the problem that underlies the moratorium. And finally, a moratorium is subject to Luba appeal. And it's also without sufficient urgency, supporting it can be subject to a taking action under federal law. The point there, I think, is that ordinance is very detailed. And it takes a lot of work to get a moratorium in place. So I think the questions that need to be asked are what is the irrevocable public harm that will occur if there is no moratorium? And the problems with the cluster housing rules are addressed instead through a standard process for amending our land use rules. The second question, would it be roughly as fast to consider amendments to the rules for cluster housing without the extra step of imposing a moratorium? So those are just kind of considerations to have in mind. And to some degree, Mr. Volcard has addressed some of that, and maybe it needs to be looked at in terms of all the requirements we would have to meet. And is that worth it? In, rather than just going in and working on amending the rules in the first place? With regard to the third question about self-storage businesses, municipalities in Oregon do have the ability to control the proliferation of many storage units. Many storage rental businesses. And you know, there are a number of examples around. Medford has a provision like that. Hillsborough does. And looking at some of those ordinances, you know, there are some ideas to to consider in setting up some new rules for self-storage units. You know, is there a caretaker's residence? Is truck rental there at the same time? Are there? Is there covered or uncovered storage for vehicles? Things like that can get added into those kinds of regulations. And so there's actually a lot of flexibility that the city can have in establishing these rules, but you would need to do it in the sort of normal process of amending the land use code.
Have a question.
True.
So in the rules, in the flexible rules for controlling many storage, how, if the number exceeds a desirable number in our community, what, what, what what way could we stop? Could we cap the number? Because I believe that is one of the requests is, yeah, front zoning code to establish a cap on the number of many storages. Can you can you talk a little bit about that? Can you address that question?
A tax on them?
Cap.
Okay, yes. Well, one way to do it would be to say that there can be no self-storage unit or businesses located within three miles of another one. That's not unusual. We could also say that there can be no development of these kinds of facilities within 150 feet, say, of a wetlands area. We can require that there be minimum width driveways in between the storage units. There's, there's probably 15 different things that in effect place limitations on new storage units, but probably the most the easiest one is to say within X miles of any current storage units.
A follow-up question to that is, we currently have a cap, I think it's a cap, but there is a restriction on the number of drive-throughs that you can have in this community. Yeah, I remember when that when that was set. So is there, is there a way that we can just set a number of mini storage units that are allowed in our community? And would that be less or more than?
I think it can be done. It's a little a little dicier, I think, than some of the other provisions, but it certainly can be done.
And, but, but you're not suggesting, you're, you're not recommending that we do a moratorium on either of these while we try to correct, while we try to address the
Well, that's a decision that's up to council. I guess I just want to caution that it's an extra step that has lots of involved, you know, a lot of requirements involved in the first place. And it might be more efficient just to move ahead and work on the changes to the code rather than taking this extra step of developing more and justifying a moratorium and possibly getting, taking the Luba over that.
Counselor Panamara?
Yeah, I'm, I'm actually so glad they asked these questions because it was a really great lesson from you, Dave, on this land use laws. So, so basically, I'm, and I'd like to give Commissioner Chair Volcard a chance to tell me if I didn't get this right. On the first one, it sounds like staff feels no action is needed. On the second, again, no action is needed because the moratorium is a lot more trouble than it's worth, and we probably couldn't prove irreparable harm anyway. On the third one, which I'm very interested in because it aligns with what was recommended by the TGM Bear Creek study that we got. I would like to add to that research regarding how we could limit gas stations as well. So in addition to self-storage, so these limiting gas stations through an amendment of our code. And I do understand what you've said, that you can't just say only three, stop there. You have to change, you have to create other restrictions that have the effect, the cap, but aren't actually as straightforward as a cap.
I did hear, I thought I heard that you can do that. It's just dicier.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
By dicier, I mean you're more likely to get challenged.
Yeah. More straightforward, just to set up other limitations.
Right.
Yeah. I have a few comments if I could to. I agree with Counselor Panamara. There's no action needed on one, because it sounds like the staff has resolved that issue. Number two, my, my thought is that there isn't sufficient demonstration that cluster housing isn't, is doing such harm that we need to take such extreme actions. I do want to I do want to validate Commissioner Riley's concerns in that I also tried to do a cluster housing a few years ago project and found it really challenging. But to me, that didn't equate that for those who can do cluster housing, it's doing such harm to our community that we should rush into this. So I do think it needs work. And I hope that that work gets queued up along with other work in Title 18. I'm not sure that it's more, a bigger priority than some of the other things that are in the parking lot of of Title 18, so I wouldn't suggest we do it outside of that process. That's just, those are just my thoughts. So I also agree that no action is needed there and would hope that Chair would take back the whatever decision is made here, but, but those thoughts, if that's, if that's the direction that the council decides to go in. And then finally, what I would say about the number of storage facilities. You know, I feel like if we had to demonstrate, if the only option we had was to go after a moratorium, and we had to demonstrate the compelling need, I think we could when it comes to storage units. I don't think we should, because I think your alternative is, is a better idea. But I think that making that statement alone, the, the, the risk that having more storage unit is to our community is that we can put housing along the 99. And when we put storage units in instead, and we've got a significant number of them, we are diminishing our ability to do mixed-use projects out there, and that we have a great plan for 99, and we're, and it doesn't include a, a line of storage units down the Highway 99. So I think it's compelling, and I would hope that the council would consider the suggestions that our attorney has made to, to address it in the way that you suggested by changing the code, but that you prioritize that instead of waiting till the 18, to the Code 18 revisions. I would hope that we will be able to do that. Those are my comments. Anybody else?
I would just say that I agree with what both of you have said, and I would support prioritizing the main storage change.
Counselor Byers?
I would as well.
So that would be, that would, if we decided to do that, would take a motion. Direct staff, right? I mean, I don't want to cut you off, so go ahead and say what you want to say.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, it's sort of tangential, but I just wanted to say, I have not been part of any of the discussions about either one of these initiatives. And my comments were not intended to say that I had a conclusion about how important either one of those is. I'm just talking about the process.
Yes, and I, and I heard that. I only made that point about the urgency, just to justify or qualify why I think that shouldn't wait for the Title 18. And had a little bit to do with what your comments were. Thank you for clarifying that, Dave. So it would require a motion, but I, do you have further?
Yeah, I just, I heard prioritizing, I'm just wondering, does the council have an appetite to add gas stations in there as well? Or not? I mean, I'll make the motion if someone wants to come it out.
Would it be more challenging, Dave?
Pardon me?
Would it make it more challenging, or would you be able to do the same rules for the same?
I, I don't think it would make it more challenging, no.
If there's no other comments, I'm going to entertain a motion. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to direct staff to research potential approaches to address concerns regarding mini storage development and gas station development for a presentation to the Planning Commission and/or City Council.
Second. There's a motion and a second to
It's the second paragraph on page 103.
To direct staff to research potential approaches to address concerns regarding mini storage and gas stations development for presentation to the Planning Commission and/or City Council. Any further discussion? My, my discussion would be, we know what the Planning Commission wants us, wants to do. And in terms of like, the speed, I mean, the, the outcome. And I would hope that, that, that those research items would just come to the council. So, so as not to slow down the process. Counselor Byers?
Could it not be a combined study session?
Do we have a study session coming up? I don't know that combined.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, I think probably this, I think we can find space for it. Certainly, I agree with Counselor Panamara that I think this fits very well with the recommendations from the corridor plan that are tentatively scheduled to go to the Planning Commission on the second there meeting in April. Perhaps a joint session of the Planning Commission and members at City Council at that Planning Commission date might be one way to approach the question.
And is that a soon date?
That would be a month, a month, give or take a couple of days from today.
Dave?
Mayor, I know there's a motion on the table. I think we're in discussion of that. And I just want to add that another way to handle this, rather than me produce, doing some research and presenting it to the Planning Commission and perhaps to the council, is to simply ask the Planning Commission to work on these changes in these two arenas, and I'll work with them as part of that, just like you would ask them to make some change in some other land use regulation. And I guess my point is having me present a research and some research conclusions might be just an additional step, because it sounds like you know you want to make some changes. So asking the Planning Council to look at and consider those changes and I will, of course, assist them along with the folks from the Planning Department.
So you actually come back with language for a change in the
That's what I'm suggesting, I guess.
That sounds like it's faster. I mean, that's really what I'm hoping to see. Counselor Panamara?
I think I can amend it to accomplish that by just changing a few words.
Okay, so I'll entertain. I mean, you can, you can do it any way you want.
I'll withdraw the motion.
Okay, with a second?
Second.
Okay.
Okay. So then it's moved to direct staff to work with the Planning Commission on potential approaches to address concerns regarding mini storage development and gas station development for present period. Does that sound right?
I didn't hear the very last part.
The very last part was, I didn't need to say for presentation.
Oh, right, okay.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Can you repeat your motion?
Sure, I hope so. I am to direct staff to work with the Planning Commission to develop potential approaches to address concerns regarding mini storage development and gas station development.
Hey, we have a motion and a second, as stated into the record by Counselor Panamara. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Colley?
Yes.
Counselor Primara?
Yes.
Counselor Medina?
Yes.
Counselor Pessizo?
Council Pizizo.
Yes.
Council Byers.
Yes.
Council Penomarif.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you. I just want to say, uh I so appreciate this council's urgency on this. I, I, it wasn't long ago that I asked for this to be considered. Uh the, finding a way to control the number of mini storages, and in the meantime, a new one was built, so it really does need, um need attention. I appreciate the council's decision. Um and thank you, uh Mr. Chair, appreciate seeing you and next item on the agenda is discussion of talent selection process planned talent community resource center staff.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Um uh I have brought to, for your consideration a possible approach to um to finding uh occupants, uh tenants for the Talent Community Resource Center. Um that uh, that is a building that we have funding to purchase, and we've identified a potential building for that, for that purchase. Um and I would propose that um the, that um so uh I'm sorry to, I'm gonna try to make clear that uh I, this is sort of one, one proposal. I'm, I'm asking you all to consider what, what the approach as a whole would be, so both the mechanism for soliciting interest and also the, the standards by which staff might select um the, the tenants. So um the motion would be to really put out uh an invitation um to a wide variety of organizations. Um I, I listed a, a number of representative groups. Um and to ask them to describe their oper, their proposed operations in the site um relative to the, uh what I'll talk about next, which would be the criteria for selection. Um and then uh the staff would um look at those uh applications against the criteria for selection. Um make a preliminary, uh preliminary choice, and then bring those, those together to the, those organizations together to see if we have a coherent vision uh together for uh for those, for those tenants, and then uh as, as staff reached agreement on leases, um we bring those to council for approval. Um I should, would, would you prefer I stop there with the process or run through what that could, what some criteria might be?
Um. Any questions at this point? Uh Council Penomarif?
Well, I, I don't really have a question. I'm, I'm just, I'm, it feels a little cart before the horse. Um but I, I mean, I don't want to interrupt the staff before.
Do you want to complete this?
I'd be happy to tackle the cart or the horse first. I'm not sure which, which is through the, the piece that you'd like to hear first.
Yeah. No, I, I, I just think that um as far as the development of the criteria, I think probably the development of the criteria should um happen uh before we start soliciting uh folks, and I, I think, I think I'm wondering whether a, a study session on that would be.
Um what, so uh what, what I was trying to express is that I'd like to present both of them to both the criteria and the process to you at once, because I agree with you. We wouldn't want to proceed with any process without having a clear idea of the criteria. So
Okay.
if I might, I'll, I'll, I'll finish summarizing the staff report and then welcome your direction on what the next steps would be. So um I, I propose thinking uh about the criteria in sort of three groups. One are the groups that would, sort of the must haves, the things that are, that we wouldn't want uh a, any tenants that don't meet. Um and those would first, uh of course, be meeting the intent of the grant, i.e. that they're serving, those groups are serving uh the people of talent um that they are supportive of and complimentary to using the building for uh food pantry and/or food distribution, which was clearly envisioned in the grant proposal, and that they match the existing zone. Um so those would be the minimum criteria, and then, then the um, the uh other factors we would look at, and rather than building a uh scoring matrix, which I think sometimes gives us the false sensation that we're conducting a scientific process. I, I just propose sort of two tiers of, of other factors to look at. Um and the most important would be um that they're serving particularly high need populations, that the, they're serving communities that lack other services in the community. Um that their space requirements are compatible with the efficient use of the building, and by that I meant simply if there's um a user that wants seventy-five percent of the space, and we don't have any user who wants twenty-five percent of the space, that, that may be the right way to use it, but um that's, that's something that we want to hesitate, right? We, we, it's a little bit of a jigsaw puzzle, is why I'm trying to represent with that. Um and that uh, and that we have a confidence that they, they could pay, they could pay the rent. Um other factors that might be more tiebreakers, if, if, uh if we've got multiple really strong candidates um might be um their, their compatibility and interest in uh participating in use of the, of the building as a resilience hub. Um the positive impact that, that we would be able to provide to the organization themselves by allowing them to, to be uh members there or, or tenants there. Um they're, the way that they complement the other resource. Um current city tenants might be somebody that we uh, that we favor, and um, and that they are, they have the staff or the capacity to stay in good communication with, with the city as, as we're dealing with man, you know, property management or other, other issues. Um which reminds I, as I understood, it's something that Gary had, had right when you all. Um so I'll, I'll uh, I'll stop there with one exception, and that is to note that we, that you all did have some written uh communication on, on this topic. Um Tammy Wilder, um who is uh, uh the volunteer manager at the Access Town Food Pantry and also Director of Worthwhile Town encouraged you all to focus on tenant cri, criteria that prioritize groups, uh organizations that are providing face-to-face services to members of the community, particularly those that might provide public assistance, housing, utility support, aging, visibility and health services, and um free community gathering space. She pointed out, there's a rare opportunity to have such, such an accessible location in downtown.
And there was another?
And uh, yep, there was a second uh communication from uh Elise Ball um who uh encouraged the council to consider the Talent Food Pantry, and their, both their, their needs uh for storage and uh and, and using this as potentially a distribution site for their work as well.
Thank you, Alex. And by reference, we'll just make sure that the uh these two letters get into the minutes. Um Council Byers?
Uh yeah, that I wanted to add a little bit of clarification to the minimum requirements, um or at least discuss the potential for um that first minimum requirement, meeting the intent of the grant, i.e. service to the people of talent. I agree, direct service is what I'm really thinking of when I think of the word surface to the people of talent, just because it is so accessible both by um transit car and on foot. So to me, it would make sense to put services there as opposed to administrative. Even though it may be the administrative office of, of an organization, but it's also serving the community.
So I think um first of all, I, I have a comment that I want to make about um the staff report. Uh and then I think what I'm hearing is whether or not we want to decide to move this to a study session. Um uh where we can refine the language and, and the details. Um so the, the um and I meant to mention this earlier today, but um the grid itself um with the fact that it's mixed language, potential tenants and other organizations to notify, those are two completely different things in terms of like, do they, you know, do they trigger a potential conflict of interest, for example, and not? Um the other thing, uh so an example of that, I, I reached, uh tried to reach out to um the O G E C today just to um mention to them that, and this is before your time. Uh Alex, Talent Business Lines uh notified Gary that we did not want to be um in, in this building, um because we, our reasoning was that we had just remodeled our office at the other place and spent a great deal of money doing that, and we just wanted to return to that office. Um and um that was the notification, but, but it brought a larger point. I, I had gotten contacted by the school district uh by a board member of the school districts, asking, you know, what, what it meant to be on this list. And so, so I think the way to solve those issues would be to have it, let's just say, organizations to notify. Um and I mean, you worked in school district, for example, this could be a potential conflict of interest for you to to be engaged in the conversation. Um so um if this, because we're not even there yet, we're not even at that point where we're um where, where the criteria is set and for the selection, and really, at this point in time, it's really just a list of organizations to notify about this potential opportunity. So I'm wondering if we do bring it back and we can just change that. We were going to ask at the front of the agenda just to be removed as a correction to the agenda, um but um uh but if we're, if we're gonna do, move this to a study session uh for the purpose of yeah, for uh developing the criteria and the, the process, it'd be fine just to change the language on this, and I mean, we don't mind supporting, like pushing the message out or doing, doing some outreach for it. We just don't want to be a part of the the potential tenants list.
Ha, happy to do that, and that, that was exactly my, my intent, was that, that some of these organizations might be good organizations to share the information, but even though they weren't necessarily.
Uh we, we guessed that, and we, we called the O G E C just for, you know, as you say, a preponderance of caution, but uh, but yeah, we would, I, I think if we just say organizations to notify, we can have everybody on this list now. Um I, I, when I look at this list, I think just about all of us have are, you know, uh have either current or past association with these things. Uh Council Corley?
I think your statement too is important for the record in this meeting to state that that is what this list is.
Yeah.
It is outreach. It is not, you know, electing anybody yet.
That's correct. Uh Counselor Medina and then Counselor Perry Miller?
Um yeah, so like the organizations to notify, definitely, but there's a whole lot of other organizations too out there. Um so I'm just curious, like, how do we notify them too, you know, even if we don't? Or is that something we're concerned about right now?
Um I, I'd be, um all ears for suggestions, and, and you're wel, welcome to, you know, do that offline or, or in this meeting. Um the reason I included some organizations like United Way and Jackson Care Connect is they, they have networks, they have deep networks with lots of organizations, so I, I, that, that would be my hope is that by, by hitting some of those, we'll connect the organizations we might get.
So that it's like, not just like, oh, here's a notification for you, it's like sending it out to your people kind of thing?
Exactly.
Okay, that's
And or, right?
And or, right, yeah, okay, that makes sense.
All right. So um the next question then is, do we want to discuss this side? Uh and try to refine it further, do we want to look for time to do a study session and consider both of the matters together, and then? Council Byers?
I would prefer a study session.
Study session.
All right, yeah. Anybody have a see a different link? All right. You want to skip it back now, or do you want to, how do you want to handle that? Uh do you, do you need to schedule it now? I don't know what your timeline is.
Hmm, uh I'm conscious of the, of the time right now.
Okay.
Um and uh I believe, I believe practice is to not start new items uh after nine.
Oh, that's right.
Um so I, I guess I would suggest that, that, that wouldn't be my top priority for you all to get to know.
Okay. Um so with eight minutes left, is there anything, uh yes? That's, no start, no, it's no starting items after nine, that's for council? I thought that was for planning. Yeah, I think that's for planning, yeah, 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 but we, we can go to nine thirty and next day until ten.
Right. Uh so.
You know, the fact that you even know that this early, it's like, bravo.
I, I, it looks like we might get to the look ahead, and we could talk about there, but I, I think I've heard, I, I'm pretty aware that this is, this is an item that we need to move, so.
Okay, well, let's just go ahead and move through the agenda then as quickly as we can, and maybe we can get this done without extending the meeting. Um thank you, everybody. Item number ten point one is the manager's report. Uh and I'm just gonna open up the whole ten point one, ten point two, and ten point three, and let you roll with it.
Great. Um I will keep my manager's report uh short. Um uh I'll say that uh I'm, I'm very glad to not be bored here at the city town, that, that we're keeping, we're keeping hopping. Um the progress at Gateway uh proceeds. Um we've made uh several, several more conveyances and are going to be uh meeting closely with, with uh access is already working, but um the city's going to be engaging more closely with access to make sure that we're supporting the folks who are still there um into better, well, better, hopefully better, but uh certainly safe and secure housing. Um that with the Talent Community Resource Center that we were just discussing, um we have uh initiated a, an appraisal and um and should be, um have done the, a lot of the environmental work so to be ready to um to sign a uh, a purchase and sale agreement, um when it is ready. Um with the city uh applied for a C W D uh Community Wildfire Defense Grant for one point seven five million to continue important fuels reduction work. Um staff also applied for an Oregon Main Street Revitalization Grant for the Historic Town Hall. Um we have uh, we have five uh four applicants that meet minimum qualifications for the city planner that uh we'll be interviewing uh Friday and next week. Um and we are uh going to be initiating uh a search for a part-time co-enforcement officer. Um the current staff person who's handling that uh is, uh was doing it somewhat as a favor to the city and, and needs to return to a, a short, shorter amount of duty, so uh we'll be sharing that through the city website. And uh, and we are uh made some initial uh improvements to the city website, primarily acknowledging that we've got a, a lot, a lot of improvements to do there, but um I just wanted to say that publicly, we, we think it's important that that website um provide the service that needs to provide. I'll, I'll end that.
Good. Any questions or comments? I just have one quick one. Um uh a few city managers ago, we talked about um applications, grant applications coming for the council before they're submitted.
Mm-hmm.
Um so just as uh I, I can't say which ones have, which one haven't. Um but just uh for the purpose of uh checking that yeah, just to see if the grant applications are aligned with our priorities. Um and I can talk for another fifteen minutes why that came up in the first place, but, but that was the decision that was made a while back.
Good, thank you.
Um and the next item on the agenda is eleven, it's committee and commission reports. Can I circle back now? Let's get to the rest of it, and then we can circle back.
Mm-hmm.
Mission reports, all right. Um anybody have objected at? Item twelve point one is discussion of support letter for House Bill sixty-six six six, Wildfire Safety Accountability Act that.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh this bill uh was sponsored by our uh representative, uh State Representative Pam Marsh. Um and it is intended to uh provide more transparency and uh accountability around the wildfire mitigation or wildfire risk reduction uh approaches of investor-owned utilities. Um, so we, we require them to request certification by the Public Utility, uh, Commission that, um, that the P U C has audited and verified that the utility is implementing a, uh, P U C approved wildfire protection plan and address identified actions that were not taken. So they are, are already required to, um, produce that plan. Um, this provides a mechanism for the P U C to review whether they are, uh, meeting and complying with that plan. Um, I would note that, uh, there had, has been some opposition from the Oregon Trial Lawyers Association. Um, and, uh, and, uh, I'd also share that, uh, specific power that specifically reached out and, uh, and requested that city consider, uh, the use of the city logo and, uh, and materials. I spotted this.
Councilor Amara?
Yeah, um, yeah, I have a lot of trouble with this bill. It is true that Pam Marsh sponsored it. So did a Republican out of Salem, I think, uh, jointly sponsored. Um, I reached out to the Green Energy Institute, um, it's been described as a get out of jail free card, uh, for the utility. Um, you know, there's concern that there would be a lot of pressure on the city to, uh, to put these programs to a closing. Um, I think there's better legislation out there, uh, that actually, uh, supports, um, are in there. Uh, in short, this isn't, this isn't the kind of thing that I feel is really in alignment with, uh, our city values and, or actually beneficial to, uh, our residents. And with this, that would actually limit, um, their ability, uh, to recover. There are better, um, I think there are, there's a lot of pieces of legislation out there that kind of feels the same thing. They wanted them to call the Power Act, uh, Fair Act, the Horizon Energy, which is still ground. Um, it's basically want to nervous that area. But I, I think the fact that there's a number of others, like the Look Ahead, um, who is, uh, like, if folks are really interested in thinking of hand on this, uh, on behalf of the city, I think it's should be more inclusive. I can just research and see if it's now. I don't have now, but, uh, like I talked about, that would be the way to, to, uh, move it forward.
Well, uh, I hope what was made clear is that, uh, it was put on the, put on this item other as a discussion item for future agenda items. So if the council wants to consider this better, um, and learn more about it, uh, that is, that was the purpose of the meeting, future agenda items, to be consistent with the discussion we had earlier about if there are letters, the legislation that we printed on the other, the left, the council decided on it, they want to pursue it, and then it goes on for an agenda for those considerations. Um, but also, um, yeah. So, uh, Councilor Paul?
Yeah, I appreciate the interview provided, Councilor Amara. Um, has anyone heard from Representative Marsh? Any more information about this? Um, just at face value, it, it does kind of seem like passing the buck to the P U C on pretty big liability. Like a real important thing, so I'm currently not super interested in reporting on it.
That, I think that, that, that's the discussion at hand here. So if I want to deliberate the item, I, I, I think that we just need to state for the record that we're going to deliberate it tonight. Otherwise, the, the decision is whether or not we want to move forward in time to that. But before I take another comment, you have, Councilor Amara? Uh, I'm going to take one then, Councilor Vire?
I'm not interested in moving this forward to another.
Councilor Amara, did you have any other comments?
No, I was just going to say, Pam Marsh has a lot to say about it. The first, sorry, if we're going to, um, to work really. But, all right.
Uh, so it's, so far, I'm very free, Councilor, any people wanting to not pursue it any further? Is there any objections about considering that going to be a matter? Okay. Um, so, uh, item two, twelve point two is the look ahead.
Hector, are you going to do that virtually or?
Everyone should have a copy of the look ahead and, uh, in the, uh, documents next to their computer. So in this look ahead, uh, we condensed the, uh, future council meetings into one page, uh, just because, uh, the, uh, meetings for May will be predominantly budget related, and then we have not forecasted for June, although some of the items that you'll see on this page could be moved to future dates, including June. But, um, one thing to note is that, uh, there's a lot of meetings coming up. So if you look through May, uh, there's city budget committee meetings as well as Tura, then regular Tura and regular city council, uh, and then, uh, some proposed, uh, dates for future, uh, study sessions as well. Um, I should note, this is a tentative document. So if you see something on here that, uh, perhaps was an old item or an item that I inadvertently moved forward, uh, this, it can be removed and, and replaced without, uh, much, much trouble for staff.
It's my, uh, Mayor, if I might, I, I believe the Food and Friends and, sir, it's the presentation would be from Road, Road Valley, uh, Food Systems Network. And I believe both they and the college would, uh, would, uh, have requested doing that on April sixteenth.
That's correct.
Okay, so those are both moved to the sixteenth.
Um, did what college G S for the sixteenth as well?
Yes, their, their G M is going to be down from Portland that day. Um, and, uh, yeah.
I, I think there's enough time to check in with the network and see if they would move to the second, just so we're not piling up presentations. Does that help?
We, we'd be happy to, sure.
Okay. Councilor Amara?
Well, if these are presentations that are limited to fifteen minutes, I think sometimes they're a lot shorter. I don't see a problem if I want to bring the link from one.
Let me see if I can, uh, split them up and if not, well, just leave them where they are. Leave them know where they are being the sixteenth. Yeah. No, we're not doing it. Just to handle it. Um, yeah, sometimes there's questions and stuff, you know, so. I'll, uh, I'll get back to you, Hector.
Okay, look forward to Mayor. Mm-hmm, and then, um, continuing on April second, you'll see some, uh, appointments for the Urban Forestry Committee as well as the Parks Commission. Um, most of our committees and commissions will be at capacity, so that's a wonderful news. We have an engaged civic population.
I'm not sure that the appointments can happen on the second, because I, when is Parks meeting again?
Good night.
Good night. Yeah, so I think the Parks Commission would have to be the sixteenth, and I have a four street, I, I have this four street meeting every other day now? Every other day.
Yep.
I think we can get that one by the second.
They're gonna, they're gonna meet next week as long as the applicant can attend the meeting, so.
Mayor, oh.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. I do believe that the Parks Commission meeting is next week. Parks?
Federal, so they're.
There's, there's a lot of committees and commissions.
Okay.
But my understanding from, uh, speaking with Chair Hilton Walker, uh, and I could be wrong, because there's a lot of, of, uh, members recently, that he has already spoken with, uh, Mr. Larson. Is that, is that not correct?
I have, but he hasn't.
Oh, apology, apologies then. Right, so we'll move, uh, the Parks Commission, uh, appointment to a future date.
Uh, a little time, the mayor, like, spoken before the presentation meetings.
But thank you, Councilor Vires.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Uh, oh, uh, okay. That it?
Oh, and, yeah, so then, um, some, uh, the city fee schedule tentative again, what's, uh, for April second, perhaps we'll move that to the sixteenth. And then, um, note, my notes, uh, also include economic opportunity assessment that would round out April second. So then, uh, April sixteenth, we have a regular Tura meeting. A lot of this here is, um, items that have that Gary brought up and, uh, substantial amount of, of, uh, items for the Tura meeting on April sixteenth, discussion of peer and roles of Tura in the city, disposition of gateway murals and discussion of home sweet property.
Hector, if I might, I, I don't think any of those are urgent, and in fact, the respective roles of Tura and City of Towne and some legal research that needs to go into it.
Perfect.
So I think it's certainly possible that we could do the, the talent community resource center study session at that.
Perfect.
Well.
So, so well, we won't have a Tura meeting on the six, on April sixteenth?
Well, I, I would say, uh, uh, I, I'm w- welcoming the, the input of council. I don't know that, uh, don't, going entire, skipping a, uh, going a month without a Tura meeting at all. I don't know, um, whether or not that, uh, presents any bylaw issues, but, um, either way, I think you could set aside plenty of time for the study session. So, an abbreviated Tura session or, or no Tura session.
No, Amara?
I think you're finally managing to sell publicly the council discussion. Uh, maybe, everybody's moving in? Uh, I think that's right.
Okay.
And can I ask why disposition of the gateway murals upon the?
It's more about, uh, process of who, uh, and it's, it's shortened. I think it's more about discussion of the process of who needs to be involved in the, the decision about, you know, where, where they ultimately go.
So are you, uh, just so I can kind of track what, you know, it, it's public art.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so are you wondering if, um, if, when you, if Gateway, if the urban renewal agency should be making those decisions, or if we should be advancing them to example, like Town Public Art Committee or something?
Uh, I'm, I am certainly open to any suggestions. I mean, Tura owns, owns, owns them as far as I'm concerned currently. So that's why it's showing up here. Um, but, um, my thought was the Tura Board should direct me as to what you all want the process to be to figure out where those ultimately go.
And the real question, my concern is that I think staff has direction currently to store them in a safe place until we get to that. So, um, and the timing of that doesn't really matter as long as that storage piece is still there.
Yes, we have that direction. Absolutely.
All right.
And Mayor, if I, if I could interrupt, I apologize on the language of some of these items. I think, uh, more recent uh, rewording of this item was also to include some of the other um, tour items on, on the property, including, uh, planner boxes and, and whatnot, picnic tables.
Oh, right. And I guess it would be kind of a challenge to try to figure out storage of all those things. So that might be why it's more urgent?
I, I don't think, I don't think this item is.
Okay, okay.
So I, I'm, uh, finally bumping it.
I honestly don't have, it shows up on April sixteen either. I just was wondering what, yeah, what.
What we meant.
What they, yes, thank you. Um, okay, discussion, uh, is there any further discussion on this, Hector?
Uh, not willing to take, uh, any, uh, suggestions from the council for additional items, um, on Tura or City Council.
Anybody?
Councilor Amara? Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, um, I'm pretty sure we're going to, uh, cancel that April's meeting and move a study session instead. Or did you get to think that?
Yeah, I, that was, that was the sense that I did get that that would be, um, a welcome approach to make sure that some of the discussions.
Right? Thank you, Hector.
Good. Thank you, Council. Mayor, Council.
Right, so the next item on the agenda is back to item, uh, eleven, committee and mission reports.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Um, really quick, before we leave other, um, I wrote down a note, um, about the O S F noise complaint concern. Is that something we should talk about now?
Yes, and I have two other items as well. Thank you so much. Um.
Noise ordinance, sorry, not noise complaint.
Yeah, so what was the date of the event? Does anybody remember?
It's, it's still out. It is, I think, second twenty of April.
So.
Sunday, it's a Sunday.
Yeah. So Sunday, um, if, if there, um, going to be a permit that's going to come before us, is that how, that's going to be handled?
Um, yes, and, um, and so they did submit a permit already. Staff suggested that they may want, uh, so there, as, uh, there were two discussions. As they mentioned, they had a discussion with Chief Snook, which I think was after we sent the permit back to them, noting that it was not, didn't meet the standards that were on the basis of the permit. So, let's see, um, I think we can expect uh, a permit application from them. So I also hope they would like people to consider, uh, one with that eleven, um, time on it.
So, should we just take this discussion up at that time? I mean, it's, that's usually how it, it has happened in the past, if we just get the permits on the agenda and then we discuss it at that time.
So, Hector, I think that, that would be, I'm very.
It was like.
It's, it's funny because I just looked and it's actually Easter Sunday of all days. O S F knows how to have a party.
I have a note right next door to that. Might have to review them yourself. Uh, okay, a couple items for other. I, a couple, one real quick is, um, there was an email that was sent to everybody about, um, the noise, uh, the street noise on, um, Raph. And, uh, I did say that I would, uh, bring it up on other. Is that something that we would want to ask um, the staff to maybe look into some potential solutions and bring it to a future agenda? If anybody agree with that?
Yeah.
Councilor Amara?
Yeah, especially if there's like equipment, um, to do that, it would be good to.
Find out. I just want to say for the record that usually when something like that comes, uh, either to me or to the council, and I answer it, I usually walk people through the process of getting on the agenda. Uh, but in this case, I just cut to the chase. I, I, you know, I, I, I have lived the experience, uh, being on Raph Road as well, and political council wants to take it, at least learn what can be done. So, yeah, and that, that's something which is more important than this next one. And that is, again, uh, there was, uh, concerns about, uh, about ongoing problematic housing, housing in our community. And, um, we've seen them on police reports, et cetera. Uh, there are examples of nuisance reports, uh, nuisance ordinances in other communities where if there's enough frequency and enough threshold for the police department to take it to the next level of the movement, ordinance, is that something the council would be willing to talk about on a future agenda? Uh, okay, so, um, maybe if we can put together, uh, some examples of other nuisance ordinances, uh, that will give us an opportunity to talk about whether that's appropriate for our community, thresholds, responsive, that kind of stuff. Um, we'll put that on the future agenda as well. Um, I've had a chance to look at some, uh, some examples from other cities and there's one uh, there's, I think there's some real benefit to our community, look at these. All right. Um, that's it for other. Item number eleven is, anybody else for other? Item number eleven is committee and commission reports. I'll start with, uh, the, this end of the table with, uh, Councilor Bulleye and Lou. Down the line.
Urban Board, she had its tenth meeting of the month the other day.
Um.
No, they're doing well. Master plan is like super close, so that'll hopefully come soon. You heard about Arbor Day. If anyone wants to show up to Arbor Day on, I think it's Saturday, the fifth, nine AM at Jeff Roberts Park. That'll be super fun. Plant some trees. Throw some mulch, do that kind of stuff. Peer committee, I think there's eleven or twelve applications. We're in the process of scoring them and reviewing them and deciding who to invite to do public presentations. So that'll be a fun process. And then I was gonna ask, I got assigned to the traffic who's at Traffic Safety Committee. Who chairs that and is that the chief? And so she should email me whenever they meet.
It'll probably end up on the, the city calendar as well, right?
Yeah. I can look that up. Thank you.
I have it open actually right here. And I know that their next meeting is in I'll see the next February to the next meeting is gonna be in April. All right, Counselor Penamra?
Yeah, so RV Act didn't meet, RV MPO met February is where they elect officers. I was elected chair and Vice Chair, RV TV Transit District Chair Tony Moro was appointed or elected vice chair. There, just the usual amendments to the, the state transportation plan, nothing major. There was a discussion about raising dues which didn't get traction because some of the people, the policy committee didn't feel there was like a good enough explanation for the dues, but just so you know, talent pays eight hundred and thirty-six dollars a year as our contribution to the MPO and it would have raised ours to sixteen, around sixteen hundred dollars a year.
Do we get a discount since you're the chair?
That's a kickback. But, uh, no.
Counselor Medina? You are.
Okay, I'm like, is it something official? Like, I don't know.
You're out together for talent.
Okay, and you gave me.
Yeah, and they, they were afraid, they canceled the emergency preparedness workshop because they were afraid there was gonna be slippery streets and didn't want to put people in.
So I hope though that you'll attend the next meeting or three with Counselor Medina and then also maybe for the enacted document or as well as providing the mission. If you don't have it, I'll find it.
I don't know that I have it.
If you have it handy.
Should be on the
It might be.
Messed up on the website. It should be on the website, on their.
I know it's on the old website and we have access to that.
We know how to get there.
You'll, you'll take care of it. Thank you, Hector. Thank you.
I think it was covered very well.
Yeah, yeah. Counselor Virus?
Well, you heard the, about the new applicant to the Parks Commission. I want to say a big thank you to the Urban Forestry Commission. I thought that their presentation of their Arbor Day event and the incorporation of feedback from the Parks Commissioners was really great. It was a wonderful moment of like real collaboration. I was really grateful for that. And then last week, I did not have the names of this state park advisory committee with me. I have them with me today and we're circling around a couple of dates at the beginning of April for that first meeting. It's a bit of a juggling situation with people's schedules, but participating are Sarah Watson, Willow McCloud, Sean Maruna, Jason Tobias, Dean Pottard, and Chris Achem.
Counselor Perry Miller?
Uh, T-PAC did not meet earlier this month because of member illness and out of the country-ness. Um, but they are planning to participate in the Fourth Friday Art Walk at the end of April. So I'll probably want to connect with you, Alex, to talk about the city hall entryway space being open for that event, probably Chair Ruiz and I.
Um, and I think I may have dropped one applicant out of your list and that would be my fault. It's either Christopher or Michael. I will find it and get it to get its, you know, the issues. Okay, great. Okay, anything else? All right, for that, there's no other items on the agenda. We will adjourn the meeting at nine twenty-three. Close.